All right, guys. Good afternoon. We're gonna get started. I'd like to call this public hearing of the Committee on Health to order. Today is Monday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five. The time is twelve oh three P M. I'm at-large Councilmember Christina Henderson, Chair of the Committee on Health. We're in room five hundred of the John A. Wilson Building, and this is a hybrid hearing with public witnesses testifying virtually and in person and government witnesses testifying in person. Today we are discussing Bill twenty six dash four three eight, the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty five, which I introduced on October twentieth along with councilmembers Allen, Bond, Lewis George, Nadeau, Parker, Pinto, and Robert White. This bill would prevent and mitigate the burden of unpaid medical bills on district residents while increasing transparency in medical billing and ensuring fair debt collection. Nearly ninety thousand district residents, that's twenty percent of all residents of the district, have unpaid medical bills according to CEDEX D C two thousand and twenty five report. More than a Band-Aid systemic changes to protect residents from medical debt. Research shows that medical debt can have a significant negative impact on a household, including bankruptcy, job loss, eviction, food insecurity, and poor and physical mental health outcomes. Although medical debt is often treated similarly to other types of consumer debt like credit card debt, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau stated in January two thousand and twenty five that excuse me, medical debt on a credit report is less predictive of future defaults or serious delinquencies than the presence of non-medical collection tar trade line. This is not bec- this is because the majority of medical debt comes from an acute illness or medical procedure and is not reflective of
All right, guys. Good afternoon. We're gonna get started. I'd like to call this public hearing of the Committee on Health to order. Today is Monday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five. The time is twelve oh three P. M. I'm at-large Councilmember Christina Henderson, Chair of the Committee on Health. We're in room five hundred of the John A. Wilson Building, and this is a hybrid hearing with public witnesses testifying virtually and in person and government witnesses testifying in person. Today, we are discussing Bill twenty-six dash four-three-eight, the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five, which I introduced on October twentieth, along with Councilmembers Allen, Bonds, Lewis George, Nadeau, Parker, Pinto, and Robert White. This bill would prevent and mitigate the burden of unpaid medical bills on district residents, while increasing transparency in medical billing and ensuring fair debt collection. Nearly ninety thousand district residents, that's twenty percent of all residents of the district, have unpaid medical bills, according to ZDX DC two thousand and twenty-five report. More than a Band-Aid systemic changes to protect residents from medical debt. Research shows that medical debt can have a significant negative impact on a household, including bankruptcy, job loss, eviction, food insecurity, and poor and physical and mental health outcomes. Although medical debt is often treated similarly to other types of consumer debt like credit card debt, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau stated in January two thousand and twenty-five that, excuse me, medical debt on a credit report is less predictive of future defaults or serious delinquencies than the presence of non-medical collection target trade line. This is not bec- this is because the majority of medical debt comes from an acute illness or medical procedure and is not reflective of a person's voluntary spending habits. In two thousand and twenty-four, the district government, through a grant with the Department of Healthcare Finance, canceled forty-two million dollars of medical debt for over sixty-two thousand residents. However, this program was retroactive and did not address the causes of medical debt. So many of the residents whose debt was forgiving could have since accrued more. It is therefore critical that the district take a more upstream approach to preventing and mitigating medical debt. This bill is particularly timely, given the upcoming local and federal changes to public health insurance programs, which will limit eligibility and benefits and likely lead to more district residents being either underinsured or uninsured. Specifically, this legislation would strengthen large healthcare facilities' financial assistance policies, which provide free and reduced care to low-income patients by establishing uniform income eligibility criteria and require documentation to prove income, requiring transparent communication of financial assistance policies to patients. It would mitigate the burden of medical debt by requiring facilities to offer payment plans to low-income patients prohibiting the reporting of medical debt on credit to credit reporting agencies and limiting the promotion of medical lending products and capping out-of-pocket charges. It would update the medical debt collection practices by prohibiting wage garnishments or home liens, prohibiting lawsuits against patients eligible for financial assistance, and prohibiting collections during insurance appeals. And finally, it would establish some legal enforcement authority and oversight by granting some power to both D.C. Health, as well as the Office of the Attorney General for violations of this act. I do want to note that the committee is aware of the recent politically motivated change in the CFPB's position on whether Federal Fair Credit Reporting Act preempts states from prohibiting medical debt collection to be reported to credit reporting agencies. I know there will be some public testimony arguing both sides with those legal arguments today, and we'll closely work with our general counsel, as well as the Office of the Attorney General, as we consider moving forward with this bill. I would, I don't see any of my colleagues here, but certainly if they would join us, we can certainly welcome them. So we'll move to the public witness testimony. So all witnesses will have three witness, uh, three minutes, excuse me, to testify. You're certainly welcome to submit longer written testimony for the record. This is not because we don't care about what you have to say, but we do want to give opportunities for everyone to provide information today. If you're joining us online, there is a clock right there in the Zoom. If you're joining us in the room, there are multiple clocks. Don't ignore them. They are here. We see them. Okay, so we are going to start with the first panel of witnesses. We do have a person who is joining us virtually, who will start at the beginning, Chi Chi Wu, who is the Director of Consumer Reporting and Data Advocacy at the National Consumer Law Center. I believe she's joining us from the West Coast, so thank you so much for being able to do that. And then here at the table, Joanna Schmidt from Legal Aid DC, Karen Dale from AmeriHealth Caritas DC, please, Anja Anari, I don't know if I'm saying that incorrectly, and I apologize if I am, and Derek Dyer from Legal Counsel for the Elderly. Great. Ms. Wu, when you're ready. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Chair Henderson, for having me here and for introducing this bill. My name's Chi Chi Wu, and I'm the Director of Consumer Reporting and Data Advocacy at the National Consumer Law Center. National Consumer Law Center has submitted written testimony in support of your bill. Today, I was specifically asked to talk about the issue of preemption under the Fair Credit Reporting Act and why the FCRRA doesn't preempt the credit reporting provisions of your bill. The industry is probably gonna claim that the FCRRA does preempt the credit reporting provisions based upon an October two thousand and twenty-five interpretive rule by the new CFPB and a court decision in Texas called Cornerstone. I'm here to tell you why those, those are not binding and your credit reporting provisions wouldn't be preempted. First of all, the Cornerstone decision is easy to dispose of. That's a Texas decision. It's not binding on the District of Columbia, and in fact, it was a dicta. This two thousand and twenty-five CFPB rule is also not legally binding, and it says so itself, the issue of preemptions up to a court. Plus, the CFPB two thousand and twenty-five interpretive rule is a hundred and eighty-degree radical change from a two thousand and twenty-two interpretive rule by the CFPB that said the exact opposite, that the scope of FCRRA preemption is narrow and targeted and doesn't preempt bills like yours. And by the way, that kind of flip-flop instability was recently criticized by the Supreme Court in a decision called Loper Wright that versus Ramondo. The CFPB two thousand and twenty-five rule is entitled to interpretive authority at best, I mean persuasive authority at best, and it shouldn't be very persuasive for a number of reasons, most importantly of which, it failed to cite the three most important Court of Appeals decisions on this issue. Those decisions, CDI versus Frey, Argon Agency versus Alphaline, and Galper versus J.P. Morgan Chase, all construed FCRRA preemption narrowly. The two thousand and twenty-five CFPB guidance basically relegated those three important decisions to a footnote and barely addressed them. Finally, I would like to say that even though we think that the scope of FCRRA preemption is narrow and targeted, doesn't preempt your bill, there are two provisions you could add to make the bill even more preemption-proof. You could add a provision that prohibits creditors, landlords, and employers from considering medical debt and credit reports, and you could add a provision requiring healthcare providers to have in their contracts with debt collectors a provision to prohibit the debt collectors from reporting to credit bureaus, since debt collectors are responsible for ninety-nine percent of medical debt on credit reports. So thank you, and I look forward to any questions you have.
Thank you. Joanna.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Henderson. My name is Johanna Schmidt, and I am the supervising attorney of the Consumer Law Unit at Legal Aid DC. I'm here today to offer Legal Aid's strong support of the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five. My written testimony highlights how Legal Aid's clients will truly benefit from having increased access to financial assistance and greater medical debt collection protections, as well as where we think the bill could go farther for district residents. My oral testimony will touch on those points today. In many ways, the bill's most important upstream efforts are those that strengthen financial assistance to all low-income individuals, which should enhance access to medical care. As we know, many people simply forego medical care because they are fearful of its costs. However, the bill's requirements for large healthcare facilities to make all low-income individuals eligible for financial assistance, transparently screening them for those plans, providing good faith estimates of costs upfront, and caps to annual medical costs, all synergistically work to enhance clarity and affordability of healthcare. The assistance will be critical for many immigrants in the city especially, who have been and will be left without medical insurance as the cuts to D.C. Alliance go into effect. And these requirements, once they are understood by the community, should lessen the fear of medical costs, lowering the barrier of access to medical care. However, we at Legal Aid recognize that two thousand and three hundred dollars can still be an unaffordable amount of money for our clients who live at or below a hundred percent of the federal poverty line. We would encourage the council to consider implementing a sliding scale for those caps to lower it for our neighbors who are in the most need. Importantly, the bill also creates numerous strong debt collection protections that will greatly benefit district residents. It requires all large healthcare facilities to offer payment plans upfront to individuals, and limits the promotion of predatory medical lending products with fees that snowball the already steep expenses of medical care. And for medical debt already in protections and collections, the bill clearly establishes strong consequences for failure to comply. Those range from requiring debt collectors to undo judgments it obtained contrary to the bill, to making it clear that violations of the bill are also violations of D.C.'s flagship Debt Collection Act, which offers strong prohibitions and consequences for failing to comply. The bill also significantly prohibits garnishment and liens for medical debt, which will dramatically lessen its burdens on the daily lives of numerous district residents. Finally, we encourage the council to strengthen its ability, the ability of the Office of Attorney General to enforce the bill and to bring litigation to ensure compliance and to create a private right of action to enable individuals to do the same. We think enforcement mechanisms are imperative to ensure that the protections in the bill are adhered to, and without them, the bill risks failing to meet its stated goals. I will conclude my testimony by noting that Legal Aid is immensely proud to work in a jurisdiction where we are proactively addressing heightened medical costs and debt, and we urge the council to adopt the bill. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Ms. Dale.
Karen Dale, CEO, AmeriHealth Caritas, District of Columbia. I must say that as a government-funded entity, however things shake out in terms of what the federal bill is wanting, we would need to comply. However, my stance is that overall, as we look at whole-person care and those who we serve, we are concerned about what happens when medical debt is introduced and how it destabilizes lives, for many of the reasons that were just stated, so I won't repeat those. When we get complaints and grievances, receiving a bill is often one of the highest occurrences. It is not necessarily because either the provider or the enrollee is doing something wrong. It could be the wrong birth date. It could be they didn't have their insurance card with them. And so this is not as easy as we have a bill that, you know, helps to stipulate a number of things, or we don't. It is rather trying to figure out as well as whatever legislation is introduced, how to improve the system so that the bill doesn't occur in the first place, because that triggering event of the bill being received often sends a family or an individual into a spiral where now they may not keep their next appointment because they're concerned about being billed again. So lots of education on both sides is imperative as part of the process of improving things so that people do not get a medical bill. We are committed to ensuring both of those components of education happen, and we do that with great regularity, helping our enrollees to know what questions to ask, what to look for if they're signing anything, right, so that they fully understand what's, what they should expect, and what they should be concerned about, and what things they should report to us. And so we continue to do that work. There are lots of positives of the bills in terms of, one, bringing this to more public awareness. Very concerned for many of our district residents that, over time, there is an erosion in their ability to achieve economic stability, and the stress and the worry and all the things that go with that can be health-harming. And so we want to see that all the components are carefully viewed and studied, and that there's broad stakeholder input in terms of helping us to move forward in a more effective way. We don't feel as though there should be just one solution. So lots of good things in the bill, as I said, but I think we also need to ensure that throughout the process of its implementation, if it's fully implemented, that everyone comes to the table. We support protecting district residents from being unduly billed or having financial crisis as a result of them doing what's good for their health and going to appointments to maintain their health and well-being. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. It's Anari? Am I saying it correct?
It's Anyer.
Anyer. Okay.
That's all right. You were very close. Thank you. Chair Henderson, my name is Anja Anyer. I'm a D.C. resident and grassroots manager for the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, the nonprofit, nonpartisan advocacy affiliate of the American Cancer Society. On behalf of our constituents, we stand in strong support of the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five. Medical debt impacts many people with cancer and their families, and ACS CAN has long fought for policies that reduce the likelihood or severity of that debt. Unfortunately, many Americans remain uninsured or underinsured, and even those with comprehensive coverage can still incur significant medical debt. People with cancer often bear these healthcare costs because they have substantial healthcare needs, may use many different providers, or sometimes require more expensive treatments. They also may pay indirect costs like transportation or lodgings, as well as losing wages due to unpaid time off. In March and April of two thousand and twenty-four, ACS CAN asked people with cancer and their survivors about their experiences with medical debt through a survivor view survey. This survey found that nearly half of the cancer survivors surveyed carried medical debt in relation to their cancer treatment. The district government should be applauded for the steps they've already taken by canceling forty-two million dollars of medical debt to the benefit of over sixty-two thousand district residents. This relief, unfortunately, will not prevent the problem from reoccurring. This bill is a necessary step in systemic change to build a strong foundation for the future. ACS CAN encourages the council to broaden the applicability of this legislation beyond large healthcare facility, as outlined in our written testimony. An individual's cancer journey from initial screening through survivorship and even end-of-life care extends beyond the medical services provided by hospitals. Recognizing those additional cost factors is a more inclusive and truer assessment upon impact of these individuals. In addition, given the recent interpretive ruling released by the CFPB, we encourage the committee to add additional language, as recommended by the NCLC, that would be less vulnerable to these preemptive charges. While the rule may not be legally binding, we've already seen attempts to challenge state reporting laws. We feel strongly that prohibiting reporting is important for residents with medical debt. Medical debt is not only less predictive of creditworthiness, as you've mentioned, than other presences of types of debt. Recent research found an association between declining credit score and mortality among cancer patients. Mortality for patients whose credit score dropped two tiers increased by nearly thirty percent. ACS CAN thanks the chair and the committee for the opportunity to testify and urges a favorable report of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dyer.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Henderson. I am Derek Dyer, and I'm a staff attorney with LCE's Consumer Protection and Home Ownership Preservation Practice. LCE supports the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five. In my more than twenty years of experience in bankruptcy law, which gives me a deep understanding of how Chapter thirteen and other legal remedies protect homeowners, my experience gives me a firsthand insight into the impact of medical debt on housing stability and how legal protections can preserve homeownership. I provide greater detail about this impact in my written testimony. This critical legislation protects district seniors from devastating consequences of medical liens. By removing medical liens, this legislation addresses one of the hidden drivers of senior housing instability. Medical debt creates unique barriers to financial tools for seniors because it arises from emergency or unnecessary care. When unpaid, it can lead to liens on homeowners' properties, which are particularly harmful to seniors. For example, medical liens can impact reverse mortgages. Reverse mortgages can be a lifeline for seniors. Seniors often use reverse mortgages to pay off existing defaulted mortgages or pay off outstanding tax debt. To qualify, though, the senior's debt-to-equity ratio in the home must be acceptable to the lender. Even a modest lien can push a borrower's debt-to-equity ratio beyond acceptable limits and disqualify the borrower entirely. Medical liens could block access to a critical financial lifeline, leaving seniors unable to tap their home equity to stabilize their finances and avoid foreclosure. Medical liens also impact a senior's ability to seek Chapter thirteen. Chapter thirteen bankruptcy allows homeowners to retain their property by reorganizing debts under a quarter-proved plan. Filing Chapter thirteen immediately halts foreclosure and enables a borrower to catch up on a defaulted mortgage. Chapter thirteen, therefore, assists a homeowner in preserving their home. Medical liens, however, undermine this effectiveness because they create additional secured claims for the repayment plan. Higher secured debt makes the plan, often makes the plan unaffordable or disqualify the debtor from Chapter thirteen entirely, thereby increasing the risk of foreclosure. In short, the bill helps protect the most valuable asset and safety net from many of the district seniors. Therefore, LCE insists, you know, we let the council pass the legislation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you to this panel of witnesses. I tell my husband every time, I'm like, I swear I learn something new every day, and I definitely learned something new specifically from this panel already. I will say just upfront, several of you have not uploaded your testimony for the record, because I was trying to follow along or catch a statistic, and I could not. So Ms. Anyer and Mr. Dyer, if you could please upload your testimony so we can certainly check back on, on that. Ms. Anyer, you said something towards the end of your testimony around credit score changes and moving two tiers. Can you just repeat that again?
Yes. Mortality for patients whose credit score dropped two tiers increased by nearly thirty percent.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Yeah. Well, thank you for being here and for being an advocate. I think one of the things that we wanted to work on this legislation is because of some of the things that all of you talked about, whether it be, you know, medical debt being a leasing cause for housing instability for seniors, or some of the other things that take on. Even Ms. Dale, you talked about the stress of medical debt can actually be health harming, adding more debt to and more issues that sort of arise. And, you know, I understand that unfortunately, healthcare is not free, right? Doctors need to be paid, technicians need to be paid, supplies have to be purchased, and all of these different things. And also, there are so many things that certain insurance plans don't cover, especially when you get into some of the, we don't really have them here in DC, but I'm sure that given some of the changes that are happening on the federal level, there will be a lot more people who are trying to, you know, hawk these junk plans or quote-unquote catastrophic care plans, which, yes, it has a very low premium, but it actually, the day that you have an emergency, you find out that the only thing that it covers is the Band-Aids and nothing else. And we just have to sort of think about this. Do we really want people losing their homes or going into this extreme amount of debt or not being able to finance their kid's education or not being able to get a car because they had a car accident that led to a hip problem that led to a surgery that was needed, right? Lots of things that are not of the cause of the person, but it's things that happened to them. Just a couple of follow-up questions. Ms. Schmidt, you mentioned in your testimony that you want stronger provisions for OAG. Can you say more about that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think specifically what Legally Aid is hoping to obtain is more explicit enforcement opportunity for the Office of Attorney General. The bill, as we read it, indicates that OAG has access to statistics on what the Department of Health is doing for enforcement, but doesn't inherently entitle them to their own separate enforcement mechanism, and we think that could be a really powerful tool.
Would that not already fit under the OAG's broad enforcement under the consumer protection?
We think it could, but also opening up explicit enforcement mechanisms through this bill itself eliminates the need for squabbles at a jurisdictional and tribunal level about if they really can obtain authorization under the CPPI to enforce this legislation. I agree, it's obvious, but...
Okay. I'm all about explicitness. Ms. Wu, if you're still with us, I wanted to ask a question for you too. So thank you for being here and sharing your expertise. So I understand that 15 other states have similar laws to the one that we are looking at today. Have any of these been challenged or overturned by federal courts?
Thank you for the question. The, Colorado was the first state to pass a law banning medical debt from credit reports. After the CFPB issued its 180-degree about-face on preemption, the debt collection trade group, American Collectors Association, or ACA, sued Colorado. It recently filed, so obviously there have been no court rulings in that case yet. The case, CDIA versus Frey, was a challenge to an older version of Maine's medical debt credit reporting law. Maine did win in that particular lawsuit, but that lawsuit is back before the courts because Maine amended its law to now completely prohibit medical debt and credit reports.
See, the legislature was just trying to protect people and we ended up back in court again. That is also interesting that there's a whole trade group for debt collection. But I guess there's a trade group for everything? That one is just, that's one I haven't heard in the past. I wanted to, I mean, okay, I'm gonna leave it there. I would just say that, I mean, I saw the press release of the CFPB changing its stance on this, literally in the same calendar year, to be clear, right? Like, there was one statement in January and then you have a new statement that is in October. Guidance is guidance, and I feel like this is gonna keep coming up with this particular administration, because there was, what, an executive order last week on AI, which is the same type of like, executive orders are not laws. And so I think in this case, the states and localities have to step in where the federal government is failing to act. And so I appreciate the suggestions that you all provided. Ms. Schmidt, we'll take a closer look, and I heard you in your testimony about a sliding scale for the cap. We want to make sure that this can be implemented across all of the health facilities, that this is covered, and not be so overly burdensome in terms of implementation. But we thank you so much for being here. And Ms. Wu, thank you so much for your expertise and for joining, and I hope you don't mind if we call you back as we progress in the new year on this legislation. So thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to our next panel of witnesses. I don't see Saleem. All right. Jaclyn Bowens, DC Hospital Association, Justin Palmer, DC Hospital Association, Janine Jackson, DC Bankers Association, and Zachary Taylor. Great. From the Consumer Data Industry Association. Okay, Ms. Bowens, when you're ready.
Apologies, I got a little bit of a cold, so bear with me. Good afternoon, Chairperson Henderson and members of the committee. My name is Jaclyn Bowens, and I'm the president and CEO of the DC Hospital Association. I want to thank you, as always, for the opportunity to testify, and specifically on B-26-0438, the Medical Debt Mitigation Act of 2025. DCHE and its members share the commitment of ensuring that individuals can access the care they need without unnecessary financial hardship. We work diligently to minimize financial burden on patients through robust financial assistance policies, flexible payment plans, and transparent billing practices. Our members have heavily invested in resources that proactively screen patients to determine their eligibility for financial assistance at multiple points throughout the process and provide free or reduced care for eligible individuals. Financial assistance is offered at all of our facilities, and while eligibility may vary by hospital, for individuals with income below or at 200% of the poverty level, our nonprofit members provide free medically necessary care to all of our patients. Moreover, most of our member hospitals provide sliding-scale discounts for those individuals between 201 and 400% of the federal poverty level. The financial assistance policies are at a minimum provided in English and Spanish, and hospitals have revised their debt collection policies over the years to ensure that patients are treated fairly and respectfully throughout the billing and collections process. At this time, no district hospital is seeking liens, wage garnishment, or lawsuits to collect debts, except in very rare circumstances where the insurance payments were made directly to the individual and not delegated to the facility. Additionally, most hospitals in the district are not reporting medical debt to credit rating agencies. Importantly, our members assist members with enrollment in Medicaid, Alliance, and other available public assistance programs, and strive to communicate openly with patients about costs, insurance coverage, and additional financial assistance resources where available. DC hospitals collected more than $36 million, provided more than $36 million in uncompensated care to vulnerable or underserved residents, and nearly $600 million in community benefit programs according to our most recent survey. And while we support the intent of this legislation, we believe several provisions would benefit from clarification or amendment to avoid unintended consequences that could cause undue administrative and financial burdens on patients and hospitals. You'll hear shortly from Justin Palmer, our Vice President for Public Policy and External Affairs, and Justin will outline several of the technical concerns and recommendations, including administrative processes, financial assistance verification, and billing timelines. And during this time of economic uncertainty and likely growing uncompensated care for our hospitals, our members remain deeply committed to working collaboratively to ensure financial assistance is readily available to patients who need it, while continually working to improve transparency and communication around billing, as Ms. Dale reported. Thanks again for allowing me to testify today. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Henderson and members of the Committee on Health. My name is Justin Palmer, and I'm Vice President for Public Policy and External Affairs for the District of Columbia Hospital Association. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on B-26-438, the Medical Debt Mitigation Act of 2025. As Ms. Bowens mentioned, our hospitals support the intent of this legislation, but believe the legislation should be amended to mirror Maryland's legislation more closely, as several of our hospitals are already in compliance with that law. This is particularly important as systems try to streamline policies and procedures to simplify the process across systems. The Maryland legislation includes important provisions, including clarifying that this applies to medically necessary care for those eligible. Additionally, we encourage the committee to limit this legislation to residents of the hospital's primary service areas. With all the changes nationally, as was previously mentioned, when it comes to Medicaid and coverage generally, DC hospitals need to be able to prioritize residents from the DMV to ensure services are sustainable and available to meet their needs. When it comes to preferred language requirement for written notices, we ask the committee to mirror Maryland by only requiring written notification in languages spoken by more than 5% of the overall population. We cannot guarantee written notice would be available in every language, and this would allow for a specific set of materials to be created. The hospitals do recognize that a verbal notice would need to be given through available translator services to cover other languages. Two of the largest concerns our members have with legislation as drafted relates to caps contained for those between 201 and 400% of federal poverty. The hospitals recommend a sliding scale, as such as included in the Maryland legislation, and elimination of the $2,300 per year cap and the three-year limit for payment plans. Our members do not believe this policy would be sustainable in the long term. Hospitals have an obligation to make good faith efforts to collect their debt before it is written off as bad debt, and we are unclear how the three-year limitation would impact this requirement. We are supportive of the monthly payment cap for payment plans at a 5% monthly gross adjusted income, which matches the Maryland law. The information used when conducting eligibility assessments is vitally important to a streamlined process. Hospitals request the ability to use electronic databases as they make presumptive eligibility determinations. We also believe that assets over $100,000 should be taken into consideration for eligibility. Similar asset assessment is done when districts make public benefits determinations. We have other recommendations that will be included in our red line document we will provide to committee staff, and we look forward to working with the committee as this legislation moves forward. We're happy to, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Jaclyn.
Good afternoon, Chairman Henderson and members of the Committee on Health staff. My name is Janine Jackson, and I'm the president of the DC Bankers Association, which represents banks and other financial institutions who provide services that enable homeownership, small business growth, consumer spending, and financial stability for DC residents. The DC Bankers Association appreciates the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 26438, the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act of 2025. We appreciate the council's commitment to addressing medical debt, a very real barrier to economic mobility for many households in the district. As you know, medical debt remains a persistent concern for many residents, particularly those living on low or fixed incomes. Our interest today is in the implementation, legal clarity, and ensuring that changes aimed at medical liabilities do not unintentionally disrupt standard consumer credit access, particularly where medical expenses are not the primary purpose of a financial product. While well-intentioned, we believe this bill as drafted may create significant additional risk for financial institutions that could ultimately harm the very consumers it seeks to protect. As such, and as detailed in our longer-written testimony, we believe the intent of this proposed legislation can be achieved with several targeted revisions and clarifications that ensure that the legislation effectively addresses medical debt without unintentionally capturing unrelated categories of consumer debt within its scope. First, Bill 26438 defines medical debt as a debt arising from the receipt of healthcare services, products, or devices. The breadth of this definition creates a fundamental mismatch between the bill's laudable goals and its actual scope. However, as drafted, the current definition, any debt arising from health services, products, or devices sweeps in countless routine transactions involving health-related products that consumers purchase using general-purpose credit, thereby diluting the legislation's effectiveness and creating complications that extend far beyond the bill's intended targets. Financial institutions are not in a position to determine whether a given purchase is medical in nature, or whether a balance that includes various transactions should be categorized as medical debt. To solve for this, we respectfully recommend clarifying that only debts owed directly to healthcare providers fall under this act, and credit accounts offered solely for the payment of medical care are covered. Clear statutory language reduces interpretation disputes and ensures the policy targets the intended debt category. In other words, healthcare-based liabilities rather than everyday consumer credit activity. Importantly, this also respects patient privacy by reducing the number of actors evaluating whether a product was purchased for medical use, medical necessity, or elective purposes. Financial institutions are not experts in credit under, or sorry, are experts in credit underwriting and risk management, not in making medically necessary determinations. The bill as drafted would effectively require financial institutions to take on an adjudicatory role for which they have neither the expertise nor the information necessary. And councilmember, just two other topics that we'd like to see the definitions amended. Medical debt collector should be scoped to collectors of medical obligations, not all creditors. As drafted, let me just jump to what we'd like to see, rather than telling you what you've already written. The definition should be clarified to ensure that it only applies to entities that regularly collect medical debts. In other words, debts owed to healthcare facilities and does not include debt collectors who do not collect or attempt to collect medical debt. And then the final section that we'd like amended in terms of definitions is medical lending products. We would like to see a single standard created for creditors regardless of the type of financing they offer. So we recommend to accomplish this that the term "medical lending products" could be changed to financing extended by third parties as it is recognized under the truth in lending framework. Finally, we'll just say this, we support the laudable goals of this bill, and we just ask that you work with us on those three definitions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
Good afternoon, Chair. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I'm Zachary Taylor, the Director of Government Relations for the Consumer Data Industry Association. We represent the three large national credit bureaus, as well as some other credit reporting agencies, especially background check companies, tightened screening operations as well. We're here today in respectful opposition to the provisions of this bill related to credit reporting, most notably the limitations on including medical debt information to consumer report and the restrictions on furnishing. As you may have seen in my submitted written testimony, we believe that these provisions are preempted by the federal FCRA and would request that they be removed as this bill moves forward. Before I get into our scope and view of those particular issues, I do want to note that we have made changes as an industry to how medical debt is treated in the consumer reporting context. Debts less than a year old do not appear on a consumer's report. Debts less than $500 do not appear on a consumer's report. Debts less than $500 that were on a consumer's report have been removed. Altogether, this removes a substantial portion of consumers' medical debt from their reports. But I will point out that even though the CFPB analysis said that medical debts may be less predictive, less predictive is not predictive. And so as we try to remove information from consumer reports, it dilutes their value by making them less predictable, less accurate. And to some of the points raised by some of the panelists, if the scope of this bill would be to remove other products that could undermine the picture and reliability of consumer reporting in the district, making it harder and more expensive for residents to access credit that they need, regardless of whether or not they have medical debt when it becomes more difficult to understand what can or cannot be included. This is particularly challenging in the environment where, yes, 15 states have passed some type of restriction on medical debt in the consumer reporting context. The definitions and scope of those restrictions vary from state to state, which is exactly why Congress moved to preempt states in the first place. However, even in this area, Maryland, Virginia, and Delaware have laws on the books that are more clearly drafted than was before the council today. We strongly believe that based on the recent decision in Texas, as well as the CFPB's recent interpretive rule, that this would be preempted. However, in the event that it does move forward, ensuring that the actual practicability of the policy works within the consumer reporting system, to not put our members in a position where we have to try to determine what is or what is not medically necessary care, or to guess at what is medical debt or not in the context of consumer credit cards or others, is unfair and inappropriate position. We would hope that if this bill were to move forward, the consumer reporting provisions would be removed. Short of that, we look forward to working with the council to try to improve this bill, if at all possible, to make sure that any ultimate law that could survive court challenge could actually be complied with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you to this panel of witnesses. I do have some questions, so I'm probably gonna go over my five minutes, but that's okay, that's to get, I'm gonna take some of the time of my- but that's okay. That's to get, I'm gonna take some of the time of my missing colleagues. How about that? Because we want to make sure that we get this right. Okay, I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Taylor. So one of my questions is, for the 15, let's back up to September, and the four times before the CFPB changed their minds, how were your members operating in terms of the 15 states that already had laws on the books with this regard?
In relation to states that restrict the appearance of medical debt on consumer reports, our member companies comply with laws.
Okay. And you mentioned, though, in your testimony, I guess, the distinguishing factor of, let's say I use my credit card to charge to the hospital to pay for something, that would kind of be almost impossible for the credit reporting agency to determine each individual charge that is made. Is that, would that be accurate?
We neither receive nor want to receive individual transaction-level data regarding individual consumers' purchases on their various accounts.
Okay, so that kind of goes to what Ms. Jackson was talking about in her testimony of needing to change the definite, or be more clear in terms of the definition of medical debt, such that it's easier to follow as opposed to any of your institutions having to go through on a fact-finding mission of like parsing out what is and what isn't. Okay. I can appreciate that debts less than $500 are not on the report. I don't have the information in front of me right now, but while that does reach a substantial amount of individuals who might have had, you know, there was, I've gotten bills sometimes where like the insurance company didn't cover like the $20, and you're like, okay, you know, and if you don't see the note, you miss the note, you whatever, it can balloon over time, and then that becomes a thing. But then I'm also thinking about the number of people, particularly in our region of late. I was doing some massive deep cleaning, and I promise I, this has a point. I was doing some massive deep cleaning. I came across one of the bills that I received when I gave birth to my first child. I don't know why I kept it. She's six. Maybe it was because it was so eye-shocking to see how much it costs to give birth at one of the hospitals in the district. Now, when I'm thinking about it in the context of residents today, there's probably a government worker somewhere who got furloughed or laid off this year unexpectedly, who didn't have health insurance when they were giving birth or their family member was giving birth. That $17,000, $18,000 to give birth is now medical debt, is it not? If you didn't pay, if you didn't have the means to pay. And so I think we kind of have to think about it from the perspective of like, we're not talking about you didn't pay for the aspirin. We're talking about a life event that is occurring that is very expensive, that in some cases might fall in the below 500, but we're talking about the people who are, you know, had to replace a knee, the cancer patients where it is treatment after treatment, and those treatments are not cheap. Ms. Jackson, we'll take a closer look at, I heard you in terms of the definitions. I definitely heard you, and again, if we move forward, it is about wanting to make sure that the implementation can be seamless and clear. Okay, Mr. Palmer, I have some questions for you and Ms. Bowens. First, can I say, I think you mentioned in your testimony, and you haven't made your written testimony yet, so I was just trying to listen to what I heard. So tell me if I'm saying, if I heard, if I, if I misheard, where you said that assets over $100,000 should be taken into consideration for eligibility?
That was the request of some of our members. I believe that is similar to Maryland.
Okay.
So I think under that is not necessarily the real property, but...
Okay, because I was like, your house in DC, you're over $100,000?
I think it's more liquid, because I think one of the concerns is foreclosing that someone may not have income but have means. So individuals that make most of their money from capital gains, things like that.
Okay.
So it's not the vast majority, but that was, that was one of the requests of our members.
Okay. Ms. Bowens, I noticed in your testimony, you were very specific about the words that you chose. You said, "Most of our hospitals provide a sliding scale," or "they are currently not reporting to credit agencies," which implies that they were at some point in the past doing these things. What was the impetus for the change, if you know? I'm not sure. I think you said your members are not currently reporting medical debt to agencies, which implies that, and we know from evidence...
I could take out the word, I mean, I could take out the word currently. Our members are not, with the exception of, you can tell where they're making...
But I'm saying they did at one point. I'm just, I'm curious, like, what was the impetus for the change?
Well, I think that our hospitals have certainly become, and as someone who's a former hospital employee, I mean, they've evolved and they've changed, some of them. So I can't give you specific reasons why individual hospitals done it, but over time, certainly, as, and it certainly wasn't the reporting. It hasn't been something that was recently done this year, but over time, hospitals have revisited their policies and made changes.
Okay, all right. Ola has some questions that she asked specifically.
Sure.
So the bill requires large healthcare facilities to offer financial assistance policies, so FAPs. Although FAPs are currently not required, most hospitals offer some version of them, although they can obviously differ significantly. Can you just talk a little bit about the variety of financial assistance policies that are currently offered by our hospitals?
Yeah, I mean, I can, we can provide you additional information for the record, but obviously, within the range that I gave, hospitals work with families, you know, particularly around medically necessary care. Obviously, when you look at certain elective procedures, you know, those things may be different. But hospitals will have historically, in the time that I've worked with them, have always had varied financial assistance policies for, you know, medically necessary services, and those may range along a large gamut. But the range that I gave with respect to, you know, if you're below 200% of the poverty level, there's a 99-plus percent chance that you're going to be eligible for some financial assistance. So I do want to make it clear that, you know, we talk about, you know, treatments and others, but it is not a situation where someone who, you know, you mentioned the furloughed worker, that worker is no longer now with means. So certainly you have to judge based on where they are with respect to their financial resources to determine whether or not they would receive certain financial assistance. Someone who's lost their job and they don't have the income, they're not certainly going to be, you know, expected to pay a full bill for medically necessary procedure.
Okay. I'm not sure if DCHA can answer this, and if not, I'll certainly ask...
And I'll get back to you in terms of your other question, too.
Okay, great. That would be helpful.
Yeah.
I can certainly ask Shipta at DC Health, but as far as you know, do... Nope, nope, no, that, I'm gonna ask Shipta that question. I will ask that question. It's about CON. Okay, so the bill creates an annual cap of $2,300 in cumulative bills from a single large healthcare facility for any patient under 400% of FPL. How does this currently compare to current financial assistance policies? Like, do any of the current, of your members currently have a cap?
No, they all, it vary, the percentage, none of them have a cap at this time that I'm aware of. Those that have aligned their policies with Maryland does not have a cap, so those policies do not include, they're generally a tiered policy with that. I can, I can say that of our survey of our members, I know the bill includes a 3% cap on interest. For payment plans that I'm aware of, none of our members charge interest.
Okay. Have you asked any of your members about medical lending products in general? So, which is different from what Ms. Jackson's members would be offering, but it's specific, like, help, come to us to finance your knee replacement. I don't know, but like...
We have not...
I've never heard of that.
You gotta use your mic.
I've never heard of that in terms of hospitals. So we certainly can look into it and find out, but it is, it would be surprising to me, but certainly I can't say 100% because this is the first I've kind of heard of that type of vehicle. But we can check with the members and find out if any of one of them are offering those type of programs.
Okay, all right.
Or coordinate with, you know, a third party to do it, so I can find out.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I think that we are the government. We can't be in every room and space. We certainly aren't folks' parents, right, in terms of that, but we want to make sure that vulnerable people, and I feel like if you're going into a medically necessary surgery, you are vulnerable at that time of like, do I get the surgery? Or do I not if I can't pay? And we want to, I feel like in some cases, that's a little bit predatory. To be offering, like, essentially...
I'm just not aware of any of these type, I'm not aware of them, but we will certainly, because I'm now curious. And so we will definitely go back and take a look at it. And as I said before, I mean, we certainly support the intent of the legislation, and we do believe that there are certainly practices that are currently underway. But we also don't want to find ourselves in, you know, unintended consequences, because we also want to be around to provide the services to folks. And so, you know, we don't want to even also not put the hospitals in a vulnerable position because they can't no longer afford to be able to deliver services, and we just don't want it to impact access.
Sure, and which is what I said at the beginning. I recognize that there is certainly a cost to healthcare. And our current hospitals, good actors today. And the thing is, when you don't have guardrails, and as we are seeing the big business of medical care sort of taking more and more of a grip slowly by slowly, we want to make sure that there are guardrails that exist for consumers, even in the changing landscape of what might happen next.
And I hope that, I hope as part of this, that we're also looking at the payers, too, in terms of their accountability, in terms of the services that they cover for patients as well. So, you know, to me, it's a, it's a total picture that you have to look at. So we can pick up this piece of it, but if there are issues with respect to coverage and people understanding what their policies offer and so on, I mean, I just feel like you have to look at the entire, you know, scope of it in terms of the whole, you know, as Karen mentioned, we gotta look at the whole kind of picture of the delivery system and all of those issues that impact upon this process. But again, we support the concept. We just want to make sure that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we have unintended consequences of trying to do something good.
Yep. All right, awesome. Well, thank you so much, all of you, for being here. And again, if you haven't provided your testimony, please upload it for the record. Okay. Bethany Lilly, Blood Cancer United, okay. Bradley Lipton, from the Roosevelt Institute. Bradley's here. Ariel Levinson-Waldman, there, and Sam Pennell. Okay. All right, Bethany, when you're ready.
Excellent. Hi, everybody. I'm Bethany Lilly, resident of Ward 7, and the Executive Director of Policy and Research at Blood Cancer United, formerly the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, so you may be more familiar with us from that name. Our mission is to cure blood cancer and improve the quality of life for all blood cancer patients. I'm delighted to be here today to testify in support of this bill. Medical debt is a huge problem for blood cancer patients, but also for millions of people living in the US. In a national survey we conducted in 2023, nearly seven in 10, almost 70% of people who responded, said that they had received medical bills that they could not afford, and nearly half of patients report current or past medical debt, even those with health coverage through their employer or private insurance. And once people are in debt, they feel trapped. Nearly 50% of the folks we surveyed said that they just felt like they could not get out of this debt. And I think that, you know, navigating all of those different financial assistance programs and things that hospitals currently have can be really complicated because each system will be a little bit different, and people will run into those challenges. So we need solutions that help both people with the debt they have and that prevent debt from happening in the first place. This bill does both. The bill expands and standardized hospitals' financial assistance to prevent accumulation of medical debt. It also establishes several protections against extraordinary collection practices that impact people in debt, and we are particularly glad to see that the bill codifies a ban on credit report of medical debt given recent federal action. It is important to get this on the books quickly to help blood cancer patients with medical debt right now, and because patients will face increased affordability challenges in 2026, patients can't afford to wait. So to sum up, we encourage a favorable report. We thank the chair for bringing this act, and we urge members of the committee to protect patients and their families from the burden of medical debt.
Thank you. Mr. Lipton?
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak here today. My name is Brad Lipton. I'm currently on the staff of the Roosevelt Institute, a think tank with offices here in DC as well as in New York City. Before beginning my current position, I served for more than 11 years at the CFPB, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. It's the only federal agency devoted exclusively to consumer financial protection. State legislation barring the furnishing and inclusion of medical bills on credit reports represents a critical step toward creating a fairer credit reporting system that accurately reflects consumers' credit worthiness while protecting those burdened by medical debt. Credit reports serve as economic gatekeepers for millions of Americans seeking to buy a home or a car, start a business, find an apartment, or apply for a job. And research also demonstrates that medical debt is not a reliable predictor of credit risk. Removing medical debt from credit reports does not diminish the accuracy of credit scoring models. In fact, the removal of medical debt information may actually improve the predictive value of credit reports by removing noise that obscures more relevant financial information. That's why 15 states have now prohibited medical debt from appearing on consumers' credit reports. And by the way, just to correct something that was said earlier by that industry lobbyist, that's 15 states that have completely prohibited medical debt. There's actually additional states with other restrictions, like Texas, for example. Just to focus quickly on the issue of preemption, my name actually appears on a memorandum published in 2022 by the CFPB articulating that states have full authority to pass legislation restricting the types of items that may appear on credit reports without concern about federal preemption of such laws. I believe this logic would apply in full to similar legislation passed by DC's government. To echo what my friend Chi Chi Wu said earlier, although no court has ruled directly on a state law outright prohibiting medical debt from appearing on a credit report, consideration of similar state laws by a series of federal courts of appeals have generally confirmed this conclusion, that driver wants conclusion to the case of CDIA v. Frye, in which the First Circuit Court of Appeals expressly rejected arguments made by CDIA. That's again, the industry trade that testified here. To be sure, there have recently been some really nakedly political efforts to suggest that states are unable to protect their citizens. As Chi Chi mentioned, the notoriously political federal court in Texas hasn't had an opportunity to consider this issue, but a judge there did spout off indicta about this. Luckily, I don't believe that a court in Texas would have any jurisdiction over DC law. I don't believe a challenge could be brought there. And as Chi Chi mentioned, as part of this administration's really attack on working people, they have suggested that states don't have the authority and then to say that we were wrong in 2022 about what we said. I'll just defer to Chi Chi's remarks on that. That opinion doesn't mention any of the recent appellate cases, nor does it even port to be binding. So that would be up to a court if and when a court were to consider this. And I would finally just conclude my remarks by referring to there are additional things that could be added to the legislation if the preemption issue was a concern. But in short, the federal law explicitly preserves states' authority to enact laws in this area. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Ariel? I gotta turn your mic on. There you go.
Thank you. Good morning, early afternoon, Chair Henderson and the terrific staff, and members of this committee. I'm Ari Levinson-Waldman with ZETEC DC. We support the bill. This bill is an investment in the health and financial well-being of DC residents. Thank you, Councilmember Henderson and your colleagues, a majority of the council, for introducing this bill and holding this hearing. For years, residents have been raising this issue in direct services intakes that we at ZETEC DC do. My colleague Stephen Henderson, my colleague Stephen Jefferson, who came in a few minutes ago with a commander's hat. He leads our outreach work. We've had over 150 sessions throughout the district, and just the last year, this issue comes up all the time. We hear from ANC offices, we hear from your constituent services colleagues that this is an issue at top of mind for district residents, as you noted at the outset. We appreciate the urgency that this committee's work reflects. This is a dangerous situation in light of where the federal government is trying to take us. It warrants action as a leading state government actor, and that's what the council is in this context, and thank you for going in that direction. Doing, due to looming federal and sadly, local healthcare cuts, the need to protect residents is more urgent than ever. The diverse collection of testimony you're hearing today from residents, patients, service providers, unions, major managed care organizations, advocacy groups, tends to highlight the need for this legislation and the broad array of support. The bill is introduced as strong on just four aspects. One, the bill standardizes, provides some much-needed consistency. It was talked about earlier in the colloquy in terms of financials, hospitals' financial assistance programs. Second, the bill includes key rules to prevent medical debt at the time of billing. This does so much to get at this dynamic that affects so many residents where they are afraid or too anxious because of the medical debt concerns to seek care even in the first place. This is at one level, an issue about billing. It is a much deeper level, an issue about residents' health. And so that provision is key as well. Third, as we've talked a lot about today, the bill provides critical protection to residents from their credit reports getting harmed by medical debt. Credit reports are such an important ticket to economic citizenship in our country and in our community and part of the pathways to rental housing approval. For more than one-third of the jobs in the region, they're part of the background check. An emergency medical bill from the knee injury, Councilmember Henderson, your earlier hypothetical, it does not tell a lender anything about someone's reliability as a borrower. So just as our DMV neighbors have done, the district government has the power, has the authority for all the reasons we heard earlier and is detailed in both the NCLC and Brad's testimony and in ZETIC D.C.'s detailed testimony for the record as to why the law makes clear you have the authority to do this if the council so chooses. Last, the bill creates protections against abuse and accountability, and it provides some clarity around enforcement authority where necessary. The idea is that this affects behavior, not leads to litigation, but where necessary for D.C. health and for OAG. Our full formal testimony provides several options for consideration by the committee to make the bill even stronger. We're happy to answer questions as well as to work with you during the markup. Thank you for all the careful work reflected in this bill.
Thank you. Sam.
Good afternoon, Chair Henderson and staff of the committee. My name is Sam Pennell, and I am a policy associate at ZETIC D.C. Today, I'll be reading the testimony of ZETIC D.C. client Dorothy Paul, a senior Ward Six resident who was unfortunately not able to make it to the hearing today. And this is Ms. Paul's words. I strongly support the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act. I have personally experienced the long-term stress and financial burden caused by unfair medical debt collection practices of some D.C. hospitals and doctors. Last year, I went to my doctor at MedStar to get fitted for hearing aids. Over five visits, I was repeatedly told that MedStar accepts my insurance, Medicare and Medicaid Q and B, and that the hearing aids would be covered by insurance. I chose hearing aids that I was told were specifically covered by insurance and signed the Financial Responsibility Waiver, stating that all fees were due upon receiving the hearing aids and that my only responsibility was $200. I paid the $200 and received the hearing aids. Five months later, I received a bill for $2,400 from MedStar and a letter from Medicare stating that it does not cover hearing aids. I feel extremely misled by MedStar and my doctor and am concerned about seeking future healthcare. Had I known the cost upfront, I could have refused to purchase hearing aids or purchased cheaper ones, saw other financial arrangements, or returned the hearing aids within the 30-day warranty period. Instead, I have been left to try to address this bill for over a year. I was never informed that financial assistance might be available for MedStar to help with the cost. I applied for financial assistance with the help of an attorney, but there have been numerous issues and delays with the process. First, MedStar claimed that they never received the paper application we mailed to the listed address, so we had to email another copy. Numerous attempts to confirm receipt with the email address listed on the financial assistance application went unanswered. We had to call MedStar repeatedly for an update, which no one could provide. We finally got a different email address and were told that the email address listed on the application is incorrect. Despite applying for assistance in May, I still have not received a decision. MedStar's lack of price transparency and confusing financial assistance application process has caused me immense stress. I may still be liable for the full $2,400 bill, which I cannot afford as my only income is SSI. I strongly encourage the council to pass the MDMA Act to prevent others from the unfair burden of medical debt I have experienced. Thank you for introducing this bill and for listening to voices like Ms. Paul, which I just read. ZETIC D.C. is happy to answer any questions today or during the committee's markup. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to this panel of witnesses. And Sam, thank you for reading Ms. Paul's testimony. Is she going to be here today? But I think her experience is is one that sort of illustrates what we're trying to do here. Hearing aids, right? Medically necessary, even though some people try to put it off. But eventually, you're going to have to get there if you if you want to, you know, be able to sort of hear what folks have to say. But what I'm most concerned about in her testimony is that because of this whole experience, she is now going to be more timid to seek medical care in the future because she doesn't believe that she's going to get either the proper information or it will just land her with another bill that she can't afford. And this is, you know, her case is not uncommon, especially when you're dealing with Medicare. You know, we get calls in the committee about Medicare and we do our best and then we have to refer them to the Hill because that's not a program that we follow here. But when you sort of unpeel the onion and realizing what isn't covered by some insurance companies that you think should be covered, you start to realize how, you know, specifically for some seniors, that there are much bigger gaps in care. And while Medicare is very, it's a it's a good program for some things, it does not cover everything. It doesn't do all of the long-term care. It doesn't do if you need a personal care assistant or somebody to help, like there there are things. And hearing aids is one of them. I think there's some other things that you're like, wait, what do you mean Medicare doesn't cover? Like, fill in the blank. But thank you for being here. Ariel, thank you as well. I think we worked with your fellows this summer and sort of, oh, Sam, you're the fellow. Good fellow, yes. Thank you, Sam, for the work that you did on this. And I feel like this is one of those really good examples of where, you know, nonprofit organizations, you're seeing an issue on the ground and then you're hoping to sort of formulate a solution in collaboration with the legislature. So thank you for your work. Mr. Lipton, thank you for being here. And for, you know, your experience, I think you said 11 years at CFPB. You were there during the good years, which, you know, it's so interesting, we're going back and forth over this like guidance piece. And frankly, CFPB cannot exist in like a week, the way that this administration sort of changes their pieces. But, you know, one of the things that a lot of people are surprised to know is that credit reporting is not something that has been around since the founding of this country. It's actually fairly recent, like 89, 90? 89. And sort of the more modern, yeah, in the modern sort of era. Can you say more about what is, like, why medical debt is not this great predictor?
Sure, I'm happy to talk about that. You know, there's a lot of evidence that unlike other bills, people don't plan to go into medical debt. They don't take out loans because they wanted to get in a car accident or get cancer. It's a surprise to people. And unlike many other markets, as many people have said, the pricing is just not transparent. And so, you know, you may have someone who is paying their bills, generally speaking, but has a car accident and suddenly gets stuck with a medical bill they can't afford. It doesn't really suggest that they are not going to pay their, you know, car bill or something else. And another point that is, I think, a little underrated is that, you know, the credit reporting system, some of these algorithms are quite old. And so they may not, there's not a lot of evidence that the system is super sensitive to, oh, that was a medical bill. Oh, that was a missed car payment, right? It just kind of says, oh, you didn't pay your your bills. And so people are getting dinged for unpaid medical bills. It really doesn't really reflect on their regular bill paying. I mean, I think that that's the bottom line. There actually was a recent study, we did a study at CFPB, but there was a more recent study from the National Bureau of Economic Research that really showed that, you know, it's almost, it doesn't really predict very well whether someone's going to pay the bill. It just makes sense, right? If you're getting a car accident, what does that have to do with whether you're going to pay your mortgage? It just doesn't really connect.
Yeah. And the thing too, I think is important, right? Like, there's no explanatory statement you could attach to your credit reporting.
That's right.
Or if a lending company or your rental office runs, you know, the credit report or the background check, it's not like they get a, oh, wait, so in 2019, you know, Sarah got a, was in a car accident and that is what, you know, so I.
Exactly right.
People don't have the opportunity to explain, which I understand in terms of like, I not understand, but like, the whole point of credit reporting was supposed to have this sort of non-biased systematic way to sort of evaluate, when in fact, life events sometimes are not non-biased, nor are they systematic, they are unexpected. All right. Well, thank you so much to this panel of witnesses. Thank you, Bethany, for being here. If we don't have your written testimony, please provide it for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to our virtual witnesses. For the virtual witnesses, if you have not testified with us before, there's going to be a little box that pops up on your screen. You have to affirmatively accept our invitation and become a panelist in order for you to testify. So we have Ashley Ruff, who's Commissioner for A and C 7 F O two, Ed Lazir from the United Planning Organization, Gibran Eubanks from 1199 SEIU, Danielle Arlo, the American Financial Services Association. And we're going to keep going because I think we got some folks who are not here. Nashat Upal and Andy Madden from ACA International. Yeah. And then we also have an audio recording from an anonymous witness. Okay, I was just going to give it a moment for folks to come on in. Okay. Commissioner Ruff. I don't see, okay. Mr. Lazir. All right, Mr. Eubanks. Okay, all right. Danielle, we see you.
Who's starting first?
Um, you are. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Henderson and members of the committee and committee staff. I'm Danielle Fegrey-Arllo, representing the American Financial Services Association, also called AFSA. AFSA is the National Trade Association for the Consumer Credit Industry, and our members provide essential credit products like installment loans and credit cards to district consumers. We also separately sent a letter on December 5th outlining our concerns and just submitted expanded written testimony today. We admire your goal of alleviating medical debt for D.C. families facing hardship. We do have a couple significant concerns about the bill as currently written. We think these concerns can be mitigated by making a couple targeted changes to the bill. Our number one concern is the bill's broad definition of medical debt. By defining it as any debt arising from the receipt of healthcare services, products, or devices, the bill includes general-purpose credit cards and installment loans used for routine purchases. For example, a credit card used to buy cough drops or Band-Aids at a grocery store could be classified as medical debt under this definition. This also leads to our second big concern, which is operational impossibility. For a financial institution, distinguishing a general-purpose purchase from a true medical expense is operationally impossible. Card issuers only receive data on the date, amount, and location of a transaction. They can't tell a medically necessary product brought bought at a general retailer from a non-medical item bought at a doctor's office. For example, a dermatologist who you see for a skin condition could also sell a host of beauty products. Furthermore, medical privacy norms prevent what would be a necessary investigation to determine the nature of a purchase, such as differentiating between elective and medically necessary products. Even if privacy didn't prevent it, nobody, especially creditors, wants creditors in the position of determining if something is medically necessary. We believe an appropriate balance can be struck by modifying the bill to target the specific large and unplanned medical expenses it's concerned with, while excluding general purpose credit. Respectfully urge the council to clarify key definitions, primarily by excluding general purpose credit products unless they're offered solely for the payment of healthcare services. We propose narrowing narrowing the definition of medical debt by adopting smaller language to mains. And we also suggest clarifying medical debt collector to ensure it does not inadvertently financial institutions acting as original creditors. By making these targeted amendments, the council can effectively mitigate the burden of true medical medical debt without disrupting the essential flow of consumer credit in the district. Thank you for your time and consideration. We are ready to work with you to refine this legislation, and we welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for the opportunity to testify in support of the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act of 2025. My name is Nashat Upal. I'm a practicing physician at Massachusetts General Hospital, and I'm on the faculty as an instructor of medicine at Harvard Medical School. In my research work, I study medical debt and the financial toxicity experienced by people specifically who are diagnosed with cancer. And I'm submitting my testimony today in my personal and professional capacity as a physician and researcher and not on behalf of my employer. I believe that this bill would help alleviate medical debt in multiple ways. First, the bill proposes limitations on permissible collections actions, including protections for patients from lawsuits, limiting wage garnishments and home loans, and limiting interest rates on judgments. Published research, including our own work, has shown that people who are struggling to pay their medical bills incur credit card debt, they borrow from payday lenders, they take out new loans, or they even remortgage their homes. Limiting the ability of collections agencies to take extraordinary measures to collect on debt could reduce the pressure that patients face with trying to mitigate healthcare spending and the associated economic strain. Secondly, I support the bill's proposed expansions on financial assistance policies and payment plans offered by healthcare providers to low-income patients, which could build on the recent successes of medical debt forgiveness in D.C. by preventing the accrual of new medical debt. I also support the proposed ban on reporting medical debt to credit reporting agencies, which would have potentially positive effects on credit scores. Earlier, I believe that Ms. Onier spoke in her testimony about credit score drops and mortality, and I believe those statistics actually came from our research group. I'm one of the co-investigators in a group at Harvard Medical School that specifically studies that area, and we recently shared preliminary results with the Harvard Gazette on an online publication showing that people who had a two-tier drop in their credit score in any six-month period after being diagnosed with cancer were 63% more likely to die in the following six months. We've not yet published our full research results, which we hope to be forthcoming in the next couple of months. But I do want to highlight that those statistics are actually based on people who live in Massachusetts, which is one of the states with the highest rates of healthcare coverage in the country and also a state with relatively high average income. This probably should make others concerned that in many other parts of the country, including D.C., where healthcare coverage and relative average income may be a bit lower, there could be even higher risk than what we observed in Massachusetts. Credit scores are important markers of socioeconomic well-being. They can legally be used to decide employment, access to housing, car loans, and student loans, among other uses. In our work, we've shown that people are at risk for decreases in credit scores as a result of their healthcare costs. And as a physician, I'm concerned that these trends are only going to worsen without important medical debt reform due to impending losses in healthcare coverage from federal policy changes. If there are likely to be increases in uninsured and underinsurance rates in D.C. in the near future, I believe it's even more important to implement protections on medical debt reporting to credit bureaus now. I'll conclude by saying, as a physician researcher, I think this bill is particularly important for patients to ensure they're battling, they're not battling collection agencies at the same time they're battling diseases like cancer. Ensuring a healthy population in D.C. I believe should be a priority for everyone with important public health and economic implications, and I believe this bill could help move the needle on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Madden.
Hey, Chair Henderson and members of the committee. My name is Andy Madden, and on behalf of ACA International, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to provide comments today. We support the underlying goals of the legislation requiring hospitals to provide clear price and charity care information and provide protections for patients who are unable to afford medical care. However, we are concerned that the legislation takes an overly broad approach in some areas which could harm providers' ability to maintain services and have a broader impact on consumers' access to credit well beyond medical expenses. ACA International was founded in 1939, where the nation's largest trade association for the accounts receivable industry, representing approximately 1,700 members across the country. As you've heard from a couple of other, on those testifying, the legislation's definition of medical debt is overly broad and would have unintended consequences well outside the intent of the legislation. The definition should be amended to clarify that medical debt is debt owed directly to the healthcare facility or provider. As written, the legislation could impact entirely non-medical-related credit As written, the legislation could impact entirely non-medical-related credit lines, such as traditional credit cards, home equity lines. If a credit card had been used dozens or even hundreds of times over many, many years for non-medical-related expenses, it could now be considered medical debt if at any point it was used to purchase a singular medical service or product. We respectfully ask the committee to consider a more narrowly-defined definition, which would clarify that medical debt is debt solely owed to the medical service provider. Also, on the legislation prohibiting medical debt credit reporting, we feel this would distort an accurate picture of a consumer's debt and undermine the uniform national credit system. Credit rating agencies, they rely on accurate information to determine a consumer's creditworthiness. This is done to protect consumers as much as it is creditors. If medical debt is not reported, the inaccurate picture could hurt consumers who should not be undertaking more debt in non-medical debt-related areas. Furthermore, we feel the legislation would be in conflict with the Federal Fair Credit Reporting Act. And then lastly, we would encourage that the committee consider a delayed enactment date. The billing process for hospitals and healthcare providers is very complex, and changes to these systems will take time to implement, to avoid compliance and billing confusion. An immediate effective date should be avoided. Thank you for your consideration and the opportunity to provide comments today.
Thank you. Mr. Lazir?
All right. Well, good afternoon, Chairman Henderson. Thanks for the opportunity to testify today. My name's Ed Lazir, and I'm the Director of Legislative Advocacy at United Planning Organization, or UPO. UPO is the district's community action agency, and we've been working since 1962 to improve the economic security of DC residents with low incomes. We offer more than 30 programs, this is the childhood education, youth development, job training, free tax preparation, housing, and more. We strongly support the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act, and we appreciate you for developing and introducing it. We know that medical debt is especially pernicious because people can acquire enormous amounts of it quickly through no fault of their own. In many or most cases, as we've talked about and heard today, medical debt is related to gaps in health insurance rather than to poor financial decisions in many cases. Yet, once acquired, medical debt can have long-term effects on a family's ability to meet its needs, save for the future, and build generational wealth, which is deeply important to us at UPO. And we see the impacts of debt on our consumers' debt in general all the time. So we serve people in DC with incomes below 200% of poverty, and most have incomes well below that. Their incomes are, all of our customers have incomes that are inadequate to meet their basic needs, and many tell us that being behind on bills is a constant and deep stress for them. And when we have a specific example of what we know about how families address debt through our free tax preparation clinic, where we ask participants what they will do if they get a refund, and many, many tell us that they will use their refund to pay down their large pile of bills, not do something to move ahead, but just to climb out of the hole. So we know that being behind financially forces residents to spend so much of their time and energy just to address their debts rather than meeting their basic needs or trying to get ahead. We support many provisions specifically of this bill, including those intended to prevent medical debt in the first place, to prohibit medical debt from being reported to credit agencies, capping the interest rate on repayment at 3%, and prohibiting wage garnishment or home loans to repay medical debt. These are precisely the kind of steps needed to prevent medical debt from wreaking long-term damage on the ability of residents to be economically stable and to move up the economic ladder. So we see these steps as not only important, helping individual residents, but creating more stable communities and strengthening DC's economy overall. Thanks so much for the opportunity and happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you. All right. We have one more witness audio to play, and then I have some questions.
Hello, I am a member of Ward Seven, and I have just ended a dispute for medical debt that was erroneous, but it had already reached the credit bureau. And the reason for the error was the credit agency for the doctor had said that the doctor didn't file the proper codes. However, I called the doctor and asked her, and she said that the proper codes were filed and that it should have been paid as a diagnostic procedure that was covered. I disputed the bill that was already at the credit agency and come to find out that the insurance company had paid the bill months before, and the bill was erroneous. This is the reason why I am against medical debt going to the credit bureau.
All right. So thank you so much to this panel of witnesses for your testimony and for being here today. Dr. Upal, am I saying that right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Awesome. First off, wow, thank you for being here. When you said that you were a physician at Mass General, I was like, wait, where is this going? But that Ms. Anier, Anier, excuse me, earlier, she was the, she cited your test, she cited your research on, you know, medical debt. And I appreciate you bringing up the clarifying point because I think that the statistic that she used was quite jarring in terms of the number of individuals who, you know, their mortality sort of as they moved through the tiers. But I think it's important to note that the research was based on folks who are in Massachusetts, where you do have a broad insurance coverage. I mean, at one point, it was us and you guys who have like some of the highest insurance coverage across the country. But also that medical debt can inflict people of quote-unquote "high means" as well. Because the medical debt, again, is, it's not planned for in many ways for many folks. It is something that occurs in that. I didn't know if you wanted to mention anything else about some of the findings that you all saw?
Yes. One thing that might be helpful context is that we essentially followed the vast majority of people diagnosed with cancer in the state of Massachusetts for over 10 years. So we are observing credit score changes in a very large group of people. And the vast majority of those people are actually people who have what we call super-prime credit scores. So that usually is a credit score over 780 points. Sometimes can be a little bit different depending on what version of credit score measurement you're using. Those are people with the best credit, and those are actually the people where we're observing sometimes the largest drops in credit score. And the reason that matters is because cancer and other kinds of health conditions that lead to very unexpected and high amounts of medical spending can lead to potentially worse mortality, even for those who have the best credit score at the time they're diagnosed with cancer and who had done all of the right things to reduce maybe their debt from other sources at the time they're diagnosed. And so the reason that is a scary story is because sometimes when it comes to this picture of medical debt, we're often very focused on just those who are low income and just those who already have debt from other sources. What we're seeing is that even those who have relatively high levels of income, high levels of education, maybe even low levels of debt from other sources, are still at risk. Even in our state where, you know, healthcare coverage has been over 98% for several years now, where the health safety net has been at least decently funded for some portion of time. This is probably what we consider to be the best-case scenario, and it's only going to get worse unfortunately as we see changes to coverage from federal policy.
Okay. When do you anticipate your final research being published?
Always a challenging question in academia. Depends on when the journal accepts it. Our hope is sometime within the next two to three months. And we'll be sure to share the link to the preliminary results in written testimony and would be happy to share the full results whenever they become available.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Ms. Arlo and Mr. Madden, you guys raised some similar concerns, which were raised by some folks earlier. And so we'll definitely take a look at the definitions. Obviously, we don't want to necessarily be so broad that we're taking into account if somebody bought a Band-Aid from a, on a credit card, right? We're talking about something much larger, and so we'll definitely take a look at that. But Mr. Madden, I wanted to ask a clarifying question. You mentioned in your testimony that you wanted to see a delay of the enactment date. There are several provisions in the bill as drafted that would not go into effect until one year after the enactment date. Is there something further you were looking for?
I was looking more holistically as we've seen laws like this go into effect out in California to deal with hospital billing or in Maryland. It has taken a while to ramp those up. And the hospitals, the way they communicate with the insurance companies. So it wasn't a specific provision I was looking at. It was just as you were talking to providers, everyone gets so caught up in the details. Sometimes they're not looking at the runway needed to actually do these. So I am encouraged to hear that some things are one year out. Now, I just encourage you to continue, at least looking at that in other provisions of the bill as you move forward.
Okay, all right. No problem. And we also have in DC where, you know, even when it's signed by the mayor, it's not technically still law yet. So it's still got to go sit with Congress for a few days, a lot of days, several weeks, sometimes months, depending on how inactive they are. So I can't ask the follow-up question to the person who is anonymous. But I do want to take into account the testimony that was provided where, you know, she believes it was a billing mistake, and it still made it to her credit report that she was still having to resolve months later. But to all of the panel of witnesses, thanks so much for your testimony. Please provide your written testimony for the record because we won't be moving this along until next year. And so we want to be able to reference back to your words. So thank you so much for being here. Okay, we're going to take a really quick five-minute break. We can call it a bio-break or a stretch break or a brain break, as my kids say. And then when we get back, we'll hear from the government witnesses. Sam Hurley from DC Health and Wendy Weinberg from the Office of the Attorney General, who will be joining us virtually. Okay, five minutes. We'll be back. All right. I will now call the government witnesses. So we have Sam Hurley, who is the Senior Deputy Director for Health Systems and Preparedness Administration at DC Health, and Wendy Weinberg, who is the Senior Assistant Attorney General for the Office of the Attorney General, who is joining us virtually. Before you begin, I need to swear you in under oath. Wow. Oath. If you will, just can't raise your right hand. Sam, I don't know if there's anyone else from DC Health who may join you? Maybe? There, go ahead. All right, wonderful. Do you swear or affirm under penalty of law that the testimony you're about to provide to the Council of the District of Columbia and this committee is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Great. Wendy, do you want to go first?
Certainly. Good afternoon, Chairperson Henderson. My name is Wendy Weinberg, and I'm a Senior Assistant Attorney General in the Office of Consumer Protection at the Office of the Attorney General for the District of Columbia. I'm here today to express OAG's support for the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act of 2025, a bill that seeks to mitigate and prevent the adverse consequences of accumulating medical debt. In addition to highlighting significant elements of the bill, we would like to offer recommendations for the council to consider to further strengthen protections for district consumers. According to a recent CEDEC report, at least 90,000 district residents with lower incomes have outstanding medical debt, with more than 13,000 facing active collection on that debt. The CEDEC report explains how medical debt has negative repercussions that extend far beyond the direct consequences of carrying debt and collection. These collateral repercussions can negatively impact health, employment, and even housing. The Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act takes significant steps towards addressing these widespread problems. Starting with Section 6A of the bill, which details what large healthcare facilities, which I'll refer to as facilities, must do in establishing financial assistance policies. OAG appreciates the council members' efforts towards, first, requiring that these policies be made publicly available OAG appreciates the council members' efforts towards first requiring that these policies be made publicly available so they can be more truly effective. Second, providing that facilities should engage in fulsome screenings to ensure that patients with financial need get support. And most particularly, three, for setting graduated qualification levels for assistance such that people with household incomes under 200% of the federal poverty level receive free care. And patients with household incomes between 201% and 400% of the poverty level are charged no more than 25% of costs as set forth in the bill. Importantly, the bill limits facilities to using credit reports only to approve financial assistance, not deny it, and allows facilities flexibility in the documentation that they consider when determining a patient's eligibility for financial assistance. The bill's enforcement mechanisms empower the Department of Health, DC Health, to levy fines against facilities for knowingly or willfully ignoring requests from DC Health to comply with the provisions of Section 6A. In so doing, the bill ensures facilities are properly screening patients for financial assistance, offering eligible patients financial assistance, and notifying patients of the cost of medical care. Significantly, the bill empowers patients to make fully informed medical and financial decisions by creating greater transparency around cost. Additionally, the bill allows DC Health to share the facility's reports on financial assistance and DC Health's reports on its compliance efforts with OAG. Having access to these reports would help OAG detect the behavior patterns of facilities that are conducting deceptive business practices, enhancing effective oversight and addressing problems from an industry-wide vantage point. We have several recommendations that we believe would bolster the bill's protections for consumers of healthcare services. First, we recommend including enhanced reporting requirements in Section 6B, which covers medical debt payment plans. On a high level, Section 6B provides guidelines for the types of payment plans that facilities can enter with eligible patients and defines the types of activities the debt collectors hired by facilities can undertake to collect on outstanding debt. OAG agrees that these are critical protections and recommends including additional provisions to ensure that these proposed protections are meaningful and impactful. These could be as simple as enhancing the reporting requirements to DC Health on the debt collection activities undertaken by facilities and debt collectors. Facilities could also be required to provide copies of their contracts with debt collectors to DC Health. As in Section 6A, DC Health should be expressly permitted to share these documents with OAG. Further, to clarify enforcement authority, OAG suggests that violations of these provisions be made per se violations of either the District's Consumer Protection Procedures Act or the Debt Collection Act, as is the case for other violations of the bill. An explicit enforcement mechanism laid out in the bill to ensure compliance with these requirements would strengthen OAG's ability to identify and hold bad actors accountable. Second, we recommend strengthening 6C, Section 6C in two key ways. Section 6C, which is entitled Protections to Mitigate Impact of Medical Debt, includes a ban on credit reporting of medical debt by debt collectors and establishes limits on facilities' promotion or encouragement of the use of medical lending products. OAG supports both of these measures. As research shows and has been relayed today, neither small nor large amounts of medical debt are predictive of a consumer's likelihood of defaulting on other loans, and a consumer's credit should not be compromised by the fact that they own medical debt. As to the medical lending products, as the SEDEC report details, once medical debt is paid on a credit card, consumer protections, such as restrictions on credit reporting, disappear. Payment through a credit card can also make it harder for a patient to negotiate the amount billed, apply for financial assistance, or benefit from interest-free repayment plans as the bill has already been paid. There are two ways, however, that Section 6C could be strengthened to protect consumers. First, although credit reporting by debt collector is a violation of the District's debt collection statute under the bill, the other protections in Section 6C, if violated, are not. We recommend that the council consider making a violation of the limits on the promotion and use of medical lending products a violation of the District's debt collection statute statute to ensure effective enforcement. Second, for DC Health and OAG to monitor compliance effectively, the council should consider requiring debt collectors to send appropriate documentation of their credit reporting activities to DC Health and also require that facilities share documentation on the promotion and use of medical lending products with the department. This might be as basic as providing their policies and procedures, training materials, and consumer-facing advertising and promotional materials in these areas. If DC Health is then expressly authorized to share these reports with OAG, both agencies could then use these reports to monitor compliance with the law. Lastly, Section 6D provides novel novel protections for consumers from certain medical debt collection practices, including making a violation of this section a violation of the District's debt collection statute. For OAG to provide effective oversight and enforcement of this provision, the council should consider including a requirement that debt collectors report their covered collection practices to DC Health and expressly authorize DC Health to share these reports with OAG. Although a large number of district residents are impacted by medical debt, OAG has received relatively few complaints in this area. Specifically, in the last five years, OAG has received under 150 complaints regarding the billing practices of facilities. This is fewer than 30 per year, despite the fact that 90,000 district residents are struggling with medical debt. Enhanced reporting would allow DC Health and OAG to ascertain whether problematic debt collection activities are being accurately reported or underreported. In sum, OAG supports the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act and is grateful to Councilmember Henderson and this committee for their work toward protecting consumers and mitigating the adverse consequences of medical debt. We look forward to working with the committee and the Department of Health to ensure that these protections are fortified by robust enforcement when necessary. I'm available to answer questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hurley.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Henderson, council members and the committee on health staff. My name is Sam Hurley, and I am the Senior Deputy Director for the Health Systems and Preparedness Administration, or HISPRA, at DC Health. On behalf of Mayor Mario Bowser, I appreciate the opportunity to testify on the Medical Debt Mitigation Amendment Act of 2025 and to share DC Health's perspective on the bill and its potential impact on district residents. Medical debt is a significant public health and financial issue. Nationwide, tens of millions of people carry medical debt, and this burden falls disproportionately on low-income communities, seniors, communities of color, and individuals with chronic health conditions. When people avoid preventative care or delay follow-up appointments due to concerns about costs, health conditions worsen, and system-wide costs increase. In addition to negatively impacting an individual's credit score, medical debt can deter individuals from seeking ongoing care needed to manage chronic diseases, maintain medication adherence, or address emerging health concerns. It can also negatively affect housing stability, employment opportunities, and other social determinants of health. Addressing this issue is closely aligned with DC Health's mission to protect and promote the health of all DC residents. This bill aims to enhance financial protections for district patients by addressing several key components of how medical debt arises and is managed, including clearer requirements for financial assistance policies, safeguards around debt collection practices, and new reporting obligations for healthcare facilities. It would require covered facilities to develop and promote financial assistance plans to enhance transparency, accessibility, and help patients understand their options before medical debt accumulates. DC Health supports the goals of decreasing the burden of medical debt, improving facility transparency, and reducing financial harm. And we look forward to an opportunity to collaborate on several areas where there are opportunities for clarification and alignment with existing requirements to ensure consistent and practical implementation. One area that would benefit from further clarity is the types of facilities to which these financial assistance and medical debt provisions apply. Depending on design, there may be unintended consequences for where district patients access their healthcare services. DC Health is happy to work with council to clarify the intended scope and to ensure the bill's requirements are applied consistently and appropriately across the district's healthcare landscape. Given changes to federal healthcare policy, the district will experience a significant change to its eligibility criteria and coverage for its Medicaid program in the coming year. This includes reducing the period of time that people are eligible for retroactive coverage, potentially exposing them to medical bills that would otherwise have been covered by the Medicaid program. Under current program requirements, most adults are eligible for the Medicaid program if they earn less than 215% of the federal property line, otherwise known as the FPL. However, that threshold is changing to align with the eligibility level established for Medicaid expansion under the Affordable Care Act, or ACA, which is at 133% of the FPL. For individuals earning less than 200% of the FPL, they will have the opportunity to transition to the Healthy DC Plan offered through the DC Benefit Exchange Authority, or HBX. These plans, much like Medicaid, do not have premiums or cost sharing for covered individuals. However, there will be people who were previously covered by Medicaid but are now ineligible for these plans as their incomes exceed the 200% of the FPL. These individuals will be at the highest risk for medical debt issues and will likely experience significant out-of-pocket costs for care. While people who are Medicaid eligible or eligible to transition to the Healthy DC Plan can receive coverage retroactively, this is not the case for new enrollees in any non-Medicaid plan. This prospective enrollment means that a person who is eligible for coverage but did not have it at the time of healthcare service delivery may be at risk for significant out-of-pocket costs. Overall, these Medicaid changes have the potential to shift some of the burden of healthcare financing to district residents as more responsibility of healthcare costs falls to patients. Healthcare facilities face increasing challenges in collecting payment for services which may indirectly contribute to lower revenue for covered healthcare facilities. DC Health encourages council to explore these potential consequences to ensure the strength and stability of the district's healthcare system. DC Health appreciates the bill's attention to the relationship between medical debt, collection practices, and credit reporting and its efforts to address associated resident long-term financial distress. The intersection of billing practices, uncompensated care, third-party collections, and credit reporting can create lasting challenges for residents who have limited tools for relief. Strengthening protections in these areas can help ensure that unavoidable or emergency medical needs do not result in disproportionate financial consequences. DC Health is committed to working with the Office of Attorney General to support these consumer protections efforts. In closing, DC Health appreciates council's commitment to healthcare access across the district and reducing the threat and impacts of medical debt as a barrier to care and negative impact on health. We remain committed to working collaboratively with the committee to clarify the scope of facilities covered, ensure that financial assistance requirements are meaningful and accessible, align regulatory functions with our existing framework, and safeguard the sustainability of our healthcare system while prioritizing the needs of the patients. Thank you for your providing me with the opportunity to testify, and I'm available to respond to questions that the committee may have.
Thank you to both of these witnesses for your testimony and for your overall general support, although we've got to work through some of the details. Okay. Going to start with some questions for both DC Health and OAG. So in some earlier testimony, we heard they there were recommendations that the bill apply to all healthcare providers except for the finance assistance policy requirements. I don't know if DC Health or OAG has a thought on this matter. What are the things? Oh, go ahead. Ms. Weinberg, go ahead.
Pardon me. OAG does support broadening it, although we also believe that given the nuances of different sections of the bill, some of those might require tweaking if the facilities or providers who were covered under the bill was expanded.
Mr. Hurley.
As to DC Health stands on that, it depends on what facility types are covered under our regulatory authority as not all healthcare facilities are covered under DC Health's regulatory authority.
Okay. I'm just, I think one of my, while I'm open to it, one of the concerns that I have is that broadening the pool of providers could create some implementation challenges for the agencies. I guess to your point, Mr. Hurley, of there are some who we don't. Can you just give an example for the public of some health providers that you guys don't have oversight over?
Yeah, an example would be urgent cares. So urgent cares obtain a certificate of need through SHIFDA, but they are not licensed healthcare facilities, so they're not licensed like a hospital, just like clinics. So your primary care doctor's office. For the most part, there are some exceptions if it's a hospital-based primary care practice that are not licensed by DC Health. Some may have certificate of need. However, most of those have changed now. And they have a registration, but there isn't a regulatory arm associated with that registration.
Right, okay. The bill as introduced requires DC Health to share information about financial assistance, corrective action plans, and fines with OAG upon request within 30 days. I think, Ms. Weinberg, you mentioned in your testimony something about wanting to make sure that the data sharing amongst your two agencies can be affirmatively seamless, so that we don't have to go through a long, protracted MOU, things like that. Does DC Health and OAG currently have any information sharing agreements that could be a model for the structure?
I'm not aware that we have any currently.
Again, not to my current knowledge. We do work collaboratively with the Office of Attorney General for other matters. For instance, regulating healthcare professionals, we refer licensure actions to the Office of the Attorney General.
Okay. How would DC Health or OAG navigate any patient privacy concerns related to patient complaints or other identifying data that might be part of an OAG information request?
If I can take that question first. OAG receives consumer complaints from consumers on a wide variety of health and financial matters and routinely receives protected information, health and financial, including social security numbers, bank account numbers, lots of private information. And we do have policies and procedures in place now to ensure that that is protected and protected information.
Okay.
So we don't think that it would be an obstacle.
Okay. The bill as introduced requires facilities to offer a 36-month payment plan to any patient under 400% of the FPL with monthly installments not to exceed 3% of the patient's monthly household income. The first part is for OAG. In looking at other payment plans that are permissible in the district, is 36 months a reasonable amount of time?
I think in part that would depend upon how large the debt is. We would want to look at that further. We don't have a cutoff point to suggest for the council right now, but we do think that the the size of the debt, and particularly in relation to the size of the person's income or assets, would be a critical factor in that.
Okay. All right. Okay. So Ms. Weinberg, the the bill prohibits medical debt collectors from reporting to consumer or reporting agencies the amount or existence of any medical debt, classifying this practice as unlawful debt collection practice. As you heard from some of the testimony earlier, there was debate amongst some public witnesses about whether this provision might violate the Federal Fair Credit Reporting Act preemption provisions. I know you may not be prepared to give your opinion now, but can OAG provide guidance to the committee to ensure we're not violating any federal statute before we mark this up?
Absolutely. We're happy to work with the committee on this.
Okay. For the public who doesn't work with us often, we all have to get legal sufficiency to pass a bill, so the lawyers will look at this multiple times before we get to the finish line here. Okay, so the Consumer Data Industry Association included in their testimony concerns that the bill's current definition of medical debt is broad. That actually came up with a number of folks who testified, I think, the Bankers Association, the American Financial Services Association, and ACA International also had similar feedback. Do you guys agree with this concern? Should we? clarify that credit card debt that you might use for a medical expense is not included?
We do not share those concerns with the bill as written now, although we are happy to work with the committee on language if the committee decides that narrowing is necessary.
Okay. The bill prohibits large healthcare facilities from promoting or assisting patients with completing applications for medical lending products, which are like credit cards that can be used to pay for medical services. Let me first just ask, because I asked this question to D C H A, Mr. Hurley, are you, is D C Health aware? I guess this is both, D C Health or O A G, are you all aware that these products are being used in the district right now?
The first thing that comes to mind is like a CareCredit? Credit card?
Okay. Can you say more about that?
It's a, it's a large credit card firm that advertises at like your local dentist and your primary care office, and you can sign up for CareCredit, and they oftentimes have promotional A P R introductory rates to help finance, you know, sometimes unforeseen expenses like your dentist, et cetera. That's the only one that I can immediately name off the top of my head, but I would defer to see if Ms. Weinberg knows of any others.
Ms. Weinberg, have you, sorry, Ms. Weinberg, have you all received any information on this, or are you aware of any of this?
We have received information and are aware of these medical lending products. We have received complaints, although we are not prepared at this time to name any of the companies that have complained about it.
So, Mr. Hurley, I mean, you mentioned in your testimony, or not in your testimony, but in your just last response here about dental providers, but I guess as written, dental is not covered by, or smaller dental provider, dental practices are not covered by this bill. Should they be?
So, that is a question that we were trying to get at, is what is actually covered? What facilities? So, large healthcare facility is the term that's used in the language. What does that fully mean is something that we need to clarify, and if it means things that are outside of our regulatory scope, how do we, where do we put that regulatory authority? So, you know, I think it's important for us to recognize that there may be medically necessary care that isn't provided in an emergency room.
Okay. Okay, let's talk more about that piece. Yeah, let's talk more about that. All right, I have a few more questions. Okay, so as a follow-up, Mr. Hurley, so the definition of large healthcare facility in the bill, as introduced, includes a private general hospital, a psychiatric hospital, a specialty hospital, an outpatient clinic, or a facility operating under the license of a hospital, or of which the majority of its ownership is by a hospital or a freestanding emergency department. Now, you mentioning your testimony that D C Health has concerns about the definition leading to unintended consequences for where patient, district patients access their healthcare services, can you elaborate more on that?
So, our concern about some of these situations is that not all outpatient clinics or facilities may be licensed by D C Health. They may end up, they may have a C O N, they may have a certificate of need, but they may not have a license. So it depends on where we put the regulatory authority in D C Health. If it exists under SHIFTA or for C O N holders, then it's exclusively bound to those who hold a C O N. But that would exclude some other entities from participating. If we put it exclusively in the licensing administration, then that would, it's, the problem is that depending on where we put this regulatory authority within D C Health, it limits what types of entities you will be able to capture. That's the concern.
Okay. We're trying to, again, make the implementation and enforcement something that we can actually do.
Absolutely.
And so the broads, like to do too broad of a swath where someone wouldn't even have information on file with you beyond a registration, that makes it a little bit difficult. I mean, let's, let me ask about some of these. So, right now, does, let's, let's choose hospitals as our large health facility. Obviously, the hospitals have had to go through the certificate of need process. Obviously, they do reporting to SHIFTA on a variety of different things. Are they, do they report on whether or not they have a financial assistance policy?
So as part of the certificate of need process, they are required to disclose their financial assistance policies, and they are required to have eligibility processes that include persons up to two hundred percent of the federal poverty level.
Okay.
So they do report those, and those are part of the C O N process.
Okay, so at this time, is there any hospital that does not have one?
A financial assistance policy?
Correct.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. The bill allows for the following documents to be used as proof of income. So a recent tax return, a recent pay stub from the patient's household, proof of D C Public Benefits Enrollment or other documents identified in rulemaking. I kind of prefer to leave it into the rulemaking piece for you all to be as comprehensive as possible. Is that okay?
I think we're comfortable with that. I think one thing you may want to address, or we will address it in rulemaking, is that you can't use the one document to preclude someone from a benefit. So for instance, if I was employed last year and my tax return says I made a hundred thousand dollars, but my current pay stub is zero dollars because I'm unemployed, I would hate to be excluded from benefits because my previous tax, my tax return from my previous year indicated my eligibility is different.
Got it.
So that may be something that you want to explicitly note.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit more about how you currently collect and monitor the different health facilities, financial assistance policies? Because this is a checkbox, we make sure that you have one? Or are we reading it to make sure that it is meeting not only the letter of the law, but also the intent?
Yeah, so currently for the C O N process, there are regulations that define what is required in a financial assistance policy. And so it is a compliance, so more of a checkbox, that their financial assistance policies are meeting the compliance or the letter of the regulation that are existing public, that are existing to date, which speak to two hundred percent of the federal poverty level, speak to communicating determinations about financial assistance eligibility, speaks to those things, but as far as additional insight, I would have to defer to my colleagues from SHIFTA.
Okay. Ms. Weinberg, I just had a thought in terms of, so Maryland and Virginia have already moved ahead of us, and I like to think of us as a tri-state area, even though we're not a state, but I like to think of us in that way, because we have so many people who live and work or seek services in all three of the jurisdictions. Does it not put district residents at a disadvantage by us not having something similar to what Maryland and Virginia might have, considering that, right, like if I'm a district resident, but I go to Enova, or if I go to Holy Cross, I have better protections in terms of my ability perhaps not to pay than I would even in my home jurisdiction?
Absolutely. I mean, O A G supports this bill, it supports the the goals of the bill, it supports much of the language of the bill, so we do think that it would make sense to get on a parity with our sister jurisdictions.
Okay. D C Health, I don't know if you want to?
And we concur. We are strongly supportive of the the ideas behind this legislation and what it aims to do.
Okay. Let me just talk really quickly about the patient complaint process. Ms. Weinberg, there was a witness who testified earlier about the desire for a private right of action to be added, and some stronger enforcement provisions for O A G. Do you all have thoughts on that?
Well, in my testimony, I did suggest ways that I think that it, this bill could be strengthened to ensure that O A G does have a hand in enforcing. And as the legal aid witness testified, to ensure that there is no question that we have jurisdiction over these matters, which can waste a lot of time in litigation and slow things down tremendously. So if we have explicit authority, it would, and we are receiving the reports that we are requesting through the Department of Health, we'll have the information, and then we'll have the legal tools to do enforcement when it's necessary.
Okay. In terms of D C Health, the bill requires that you all establish a patient complaint process to ensure that complaints are reviewed within thirty days. Does D C Health have any similar complaint processes that this would be modeled after?
So we already have existing complaint processes for healthcare facilities as well as healthcare professionals, and we have a whole investigations team that processes those complaints. All complaints that are received by D C Health are triaged. Depending on the type of complaint, most are triaged within one business day to two business days to ensure that we are meeting our federal requirements when it comes to facilities and to ensure patient safety for those health professionals when we receive those.
Okay. Have you guys implemented an online complaint system yet?
So there is an online form for complaints.
I know there's a form, but there was a form before that you had to print off and then fax to or email to a place.
So for health facilities, there is an online form that you fill out.
Okay.
For health professionals, there is an online form that you can fill out online. But it is still an online form. You can you can email it from there, or you can fax it, print it off, do those things, but it is a, it's a fillable form essentially.
Okay.
I will tell you, we are in the process of exploring licensure systems that have complaint processes built in. So instead of having multiple disparate systems to manage those processes, we are working on consolidating. Not only does it save us money, but it makes it much more efficient. So we're trying to fix it.
Okay. I know this is going to performance oversight here, so we'll ask you about it in February when we see you guys again.
We'll see you soon.
Okay, so the bill does give D C Health authority to find a facility that is knowingly or willfully non-compliant or has a pattern of non-compliance for up to ten thousand dollars per week of non-compliance. You all have fine structures on a variety of other things. How would this align or not?
My understanding is that this would, would align would align with our existing finding structure.
Okay.
One thing that the council may consider, or the committee may consider, is that each occurrence may be considered an individual incident. So I know that there are, so if they're, let's say for instance, their policy is what, their policy is the problem, right? So they have multiple patients that are incurring a problem, something that is problematic with the legislation, that each incident under that policy can be considered a separate infraction. That is how some are worded. For instance, with EMS, every encounter, so if you have one unlicensed person, not only is that unlicensed person infraction for your agency, but every patient that that unlicensed person sees is another infraction. So that may be something that you consider, but just if you're asking about alignment with other finding policies, there are variations, but this would be still aligned with how we do health facilities.
Okay. Give me just a second. Okay, all right. I was just making sure that I covered the basis. Mr. Hurley and Ms. Weinberg, is there anything that you wanted to share with the committee about the legislation that we haven't discussed yet?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I don't believe so. Thank you.
All right, okay. I want to thank you guys for your testimony today. I also want to thank the public witnesses who testified today as well. We're obviously going to keep working on this and refining this to make sure that we get this to a place that everybody feels comfortable with. Well, not everybody. There might be somebody out here in the ether who is in opposition, but on the government side that we feel is, one, putting forth the policy goals that we have here, which is around consumer protection, particularly for D C residents. And as I mentioned, right, when we're sitting in this situation where both Maryland and Virginia have already acted on this matter, it does make D C residents vulnerable to a different type of medical debt that you occur in the district. If you have that same debt in Virginia or Maryland, it wouldn't get reported. Or there might be some other protections that are available to you, so I don't like to always be out of line with our tri-state cisteren on that front. And also just to underscore some of the testimony that we heard today, that, you know, someone could be middle-class or seemingly well-off today, but one of the biggest drivers of medical debt is just unexpected incidents that occur and are quite expensive for folks, and that is an added additional stress. So this concludes today's hearing, and again, I want to thank everybody who testified and spoke today. The record will remain open until five P M. on Monday, December twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five, for the public to submit testimony. If you testified today and you didn't submit your written testimony yet, like please do so, so we can have that for the record. You may submit your written statements on the council's website at dscouncil.gov backslash hearings. If you just click on this hearing, it's a very, very easy upload process. This does conclude the committee's hearings for calendar year twenty-twenty-five. Feels very good. I asked Ona to sort of, you know, do a little tally of where we've been on this twenty-twenty-five journey of ours. And altogether, the Committee on Health has had over thirty hearings this year on a lot of stuff, on some bills, on some oversight, on some nominees, issue-specific and otherwise. And we'll be right back at it in January. So thank you to the committee staff for the work that they're doing. We're already working to currently to finalize the F Y twenty-five Performance Oversight Roundtable schedule, and we'll certainly communicate that to both the public as well as to our agencies once that is finalized. I feel like we did a little tour here the last two weeks. We'd had a hearing with, it was all D B H, then we had a hearing where it was healthcare finance, and now we got D C Health in on the action. I love my class, I love my committee, I love our work. Our work is heavy. It involves real lives, it is technical in nature in some cases, but it is because we want folks to have, be healthy, period, and not go into massive amounts of debt in order to accomplish that. Okay, so there being no further business before the committee at this time, this hearing is adjourned. It is two twenty-four P M. Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.